Great day, kids.
Yeah.
He, yeah, that was a great self to be my.
And maybe I'm not.
Yes.
Same as like a.
The bus thing.
Yeah. I was like.
It feels bad.
And actually, I'm upset.
After lunch, entertaining. Go out, look in the pool. Does it always want to be summer?
Yeah.
It's very.
Absolutely. Well, that didn't last very long.
No.
Oh, wait. Getting your own time. We're going to do shows. We don't close after.
I thought they were some sort of. I was like, we're having some. So weird. What do you put in that?
We ordered new business.
I did two groups is better than mine. I will, seriously, that's.
Somebody needs to talk to my mom. She's doing this too much. Thank you, Roxy. Well, this meeting to order and would ask you to please rise if you can for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated and welcome to the city council meeting of Linsburg, Kansas, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We will now turn our attention to item three amendments to the agenda. Tanner, are there any amendments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Turn our attention to item four, which is the two thousand and twenty-six budget hearing. Now, we will, uh, we're going to call a open, open hearing for the budget. Do we, do we recess our meeting to go into?
I don't, I don't believe so. I believe you just move into the open hearing for the.
Okay, great. We will, uh, open the hearing for our budget and we will go to item B of that, which is public input. Is there those from the public who would like to speak to the two thousand and twenty-six budget? Seeing no one to speak towards the budget, we will turn our attention to item C, which is the adoption of the budget, and I will once again recognize our city administrator, uh, and Tanner, I'll recognize you to speak on the budget.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, well, again, just want to thank the council for making it out tonight and want to thank the staff and our finance director David for helping put this together and, um, it took a lot of hard work and, you know, had to make some sacrifices and, um, we're grateful to do it because we love being a part of this community. Um, and I want to turn it over to David to provide some more details on what this budget's going to look like, but, um, we are proud to say that we're able to present a revenue-neutral budget, um, which again, this is a testament to the staff's hard work and dedication to fiscal responsibility. So I'll let you kind of take it from there.
Thank you, Tanner. I'll recognize David. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. Okay, so just, uh, last time we were together and we're talking about budget, uh, just a reminder, we were at a fifty-five point three six one mill levy is what we were proposing at that time. Um, Councilmember Swanson challenged us a little bit, asked us to take a look at it and prepare a revenue-neutral budget. Um, I was a little skeptical, I will say, to start off with, uh, but Tanner, uh, really thought outside the box, uh, and came up, came up with a good plan and we feel very confident with what we're providing today. So I just want to go over the proposed changes once again, uh, to make sure that everyone understands what did change in the budget. Um, so the change is, uh, first, the appropriation to the old mill. Um, we are recommending a ten thousand dollar appro- appropriation to the old mill still with a twenty thousand dollar utility credit to run from January first to, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. Um, so that will be in lieu of that, and that takes a twenty thousand dollar burden off of, uh, the, uh, mill levy and the property tax. Um, along with that is City Hall windows. Uh, we've reduced that by ten thousand dollars. Um, there is still twenty thousand dollars budgeted for that in this budget. Uh, we also feel like there are some potential historical tax credits that can be sold, um, that will allow us to get back to that thirty thousand dollar number to do some immediate replacement that's required of some windows, uh, that are currently leaking and causing issues within the structure of City Hall. Um, and then our streets capital outlay, we decreased that by six thousand dollars. We see that decrease, uh, by happening with one of two purchases that are being made. Uh, we need to purchase a truck, uh, with a snowplow and a spreader in it for two thousand and twenty-six, and then also it could potentially, uh, come from, um, the repair of streets, uh, if need be. Um, and then we also are recommending a removal of fifteen thousand dollars from the streets capital outlay and moving that burden over to the enterprise funds, um, that would be split between water, wastewater and electric, uh, five thousand dollars each. Uh, and so you'll see that removal in the, in the full budget and then the five thousand dollars added respectively to each of theirs. So again, um, that puts us at a mill levy of fifty-three point eight four four, uh, which has, which is below our revenue-neutral rate of fifty-three point eight seven four. The difference between the two budgets was fifty-one thousand, three hundred and six dollars less.
Thank you, David. Questions for David, Councilmember Peterson?
Just a quick one. Uh, so the, the information is given to us in our packet, uh, uh, the certificate, um, shows a fifty-three point eight seven four.
That's just.
Revenue-neutral rate.
Correct.
But when we adopt this, we will not, uh, so that when it shows, does budget require resolution to exceed, it will say no.
And there should be a second one in there that does say no.
The first one says no, the second one says yes.
So there are two. We provided both certificates on, on the, thank you.
I was gonna say, is that not?
I needed help on that.
I blew past the first one. I always go to the end to see what the, I want to see what the ending is. I didn't realize it was A and B. Sorry. Thank you for helping me as a councilperson.
You're welcome.
Further questions, Council?
So then just, so then just to confirm, first budget we have in front of us is what we would be voting on tonight.
Correct. The total, um, advalorem tax would be one million, eight hundred and twenty dol- twenty thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-seven. And so again, that are, the fifty-three point eight four four can change, um, based off what our final evaluations come in once they're certified November first. So there could be a potential, depending on which way they go, that we do exceed revenue-neutral. Um, but the, the legislation was put in place that that does not affect revenue-neutral because we have no way to tell whether it's going to go up or down, so. But it also could go the other way. Our, our rate could go lower, just depending on how the final evaluation is coming.
Further questions for David from the Council?
I just have one final question, Mayor. I just want to tell you guys thank you very much. This is probably one of the, one of the years I've gotten the most feedback and I can't tell you how much I appreciate feedback because this is our guiding document for the next year for two thousand and twenty-six and without your guys' input, uh, staff can only do what we feel like may be the best option. So we definitely do appreciate the input. I appreciate Tanner's, uh, input. We were just talking how long you've been here and I said like, what, six months now? He's like, no, like six weeks and it just, it doesn't feel that way. But all of staff, uh, has done a great job in, uh, understanding that there's some flexibility that has to happen with this to be able to make this happen, but we were, and I was definitely very excited when we were able to, uh, present you guys with a revenue-neutral budget.
Thank you, David, and on behalf of your city government, I also want to thank Tanner and you, David, and that went, went very well and I appreciate it. You can tell you guys were really working well together and, uh, getting, uh, things hashed out. I want to thank all of the staff for their input to you, um, during this term. And then I would be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, Councilmember Swanson for his, his.
Challenging.
Comments, yeah, challenge and, and we appreciate that very much. And I, I was gonna say, am I, are we going to have to carry him out on our shoulders?
It's better to park others.
But we do appreciate that, um, very much. So thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, the, um, additional thing we need to do is actually adopt the budget. So a motion would now be in order to pass the two thousand and twenty-six budget as presented. Is there a motion?
So. Okay, okay. One more second.
Okay, then I missed the first. I got Tom. Okay, good.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers Presley.
Yes.
Evil.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Lysel.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion does pass. Thank you, Roxy, and, uh, again, we thank everyone involved, um, in the adopt, in adopting the budget and building the budget this year. Uh, very well-done job on, in everyone's, uh, scope of influence. So with, yes?
Can I just ask before everybody leaves tonight that they sign their certificate?
Now, do you, are you, you have just one or do you want them all to?
I have just one that they will all have.
Okay, it will come around and, or you, okay. So we'll, we'll sign that. Thank you, Roxy. Okay, with that, we will close the budget hearing and we will move on to item number five, which is public input. We sure have lots of public input this evening. So we have a public input. Um, do we have anyone signed up to see if we propose to march? Okay, this is, and thank you for that. Um, and the next item of business is item six, which is the mayor's report. Um, several items on this this evening. First of all, um, Holly just arrived right on time. Holly, thank you for all of your work that you do, but for the state fair booth, um, we just appreciate you putting that together. It was very professionally done and was a big hit. Everything, everybody that I've talked to has said that it was, it was fun to work. I want to thank everybody for working in, in the booth this year. Um, a lot of good people there and I, again, have certainly have talked to everybody because it required a lot of people, but once I have, all enjoyed working in the bu- in the, I said budget, in the, in the booth and, uh, seeing people that hadn't seen for a while, people come by and they're reminded that we're here and they say, well, we're going to come back. So I think that was very, very positive and I thank you, um, Holly, for that. Speaking of the fair, um, Councilmember Presley was not only there working it, but he entered a carving in to, at the fair and he won the first in his class and the People's Choice Award Best of Show second place. That is amazing.
Second place of People's Choice Best of Show.
Best of Show. Yeah. Congratulations, uh, Councilmember Presley. That's, that's really, really great. We appreciate it. Um, we also, a couple times last week had third graders that came to, um, the, to City Hall and they came first and got to, heard listen to every, I think about every, every one of the, uh, directors. Um, and unfortunately, it was raining at the time, so they, uh, were interested in climbing on the fire truck and the ambulants and so forth, so they were all, our city staff brought those trucks back later in the week when it dried up and they, um, got an opportunity again to come over and to, to see firsthand, uh, the equipment. Um, we had Councilmember, uh, Peterson here making sure that nobody, I don't know.
Showed up and enjoyed the scenery. They were all, fun to watch.
Very much so. They were all very well behaved and did they in fact get, there were fifty-three students. Did they actually get in the ambulance?
They climbed through. They climbed through the back and then.
Oh, no, they all, they all.
But I mean, they, they took a photo. I just.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
That was a, yeah, that was a lot of, it was, they didn't get everybody, about got they, it's almost everybody, so.
Yeah, very much.
Um, next item on, I think there in front of you is a notice of a public hearing for McPherson County. Just want to bring it to your attention that the McPherson County Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals will be holding a public hearing on Monday, October thirteenth at seven o'clock P M. in the meeting room of the McPherson County Public Works Building. Um, the purpose is to talk about a proposed adoption of a conferencing plan for two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and forty-five. Um, McPherson County is authorized by statute to create a conferencing plan. It's a long-range guide for public and private land use, transportation, community facilities. It is not a regulatory document, so if you, um, we are one of the cities that it does affect, um, the area right outside of our city limits, so, uh, just wanted you to be aware of that, uh, for that meeting. Um, next, I wanted to just, I, there's, there's times that it's, it's appropriate, I think, to, uh, to talk about people that have passed away, um, and of course, we always see when, hate when we see citizens pass away, but there are a couple that I wanted to talk about this evening. Lisa Christopher, which I think many of you know Lisa. Um, she was a special woman and, uh, we are going to miss her. She was at the high school for many years as the director of, uh, the drama department. She also, uh, worked extensively with Broadway R F D for years and did an outstanding job. She, um, was a dancer for, with folk domslog. She also was the director, the dance director at the high school for a time period of these Swedish folk dancers and she also worked well with her youth group at church and she volunteered at tackle. So she did a lot of things. I, I was, uh, Eric Lundstram put together, he compiled a, uh, video for her and she got to see it before she passed away and it had people from all over that she had, lives she had touched, particularly in the drama departments and it was really touching. It's online if you, uh, care to, to watch it, it's really, really great because a lot of people had lots of, lots of good memories and she touched a lot of lives and, uh, we will miss her greatly and, uh, I, one of the, I was gonna, I was gonna mention just because I think it's a sweet story. When she was young, she loved Shirley Temple movies and, uh, she fell into love with dancing and she finally got to dance at the, I think at the Swenson Memorial Band Show, you know, where she, many years later as an adult and she did Shirley Temple impersonations and so forth, so very talented person. So we wish her family, Jim and the, all, and the kids and grandkids, um, give them our best wishes and condolences. Um, secondly, um, Dan Gottenoid, um, Dan, I think many people knew him. He, uh, was a, was a potter here in town. He was born in, uh, Africa, a missionary family and it ended up back in Linsburg many years later. He was graduate of Bethany College and, uh, he was a potter. He gave for years pottery classes and, uh, and then he would have his students give shows and, and he was just a very, very great guy. Dan had a, um, he had a piece of land that is adjacent to a, uh, vacated street which presented some issues when you're trying to live there and build a house and, which is one of the dreams that he had. And, uh, about a year ago, Planning and Zoning, um, did a diversion, uh, for him, uh, as he was living in that area. We had come to the point to where that was ending and he was, uh, concerned and, uh, he, uh, contacted us and I, I just wanted to tell you that just a few weeks ago, that Milton, our community development director, and Tanner, who had just gotten here, and myself, went out and met with Dan and it was a wonderful meeting. We talked history of the building out there, um, and how that had been used, uh, and, uh, in previous years. My point of that is that I am thankful that Dan's last interactions with the city of Linsburg was good. He had, Milton was phenomenal that day in trying to just find ways that were, it wasn't go out here and you've got to do this and move your lawn and this and that, it was, we're gonna help you, uh, stay here and Milton followed through and, uh, Dan was a, was a good soul, very nice man. We're missing him. Oh, he also, he, he was the, his most recent job, he was at the, um, at Messiah Lutheran, uh, at, for the youth, uh, summer lunch program and, uh, he had done that for several years and just, just a, just a great guy. So we wish his family well as well and thinking of them and, uh, give our condolences to his family as well. With that, Council, we will move to item number seven, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are routine, they're enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless Councilmembers so request. There's three items. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, September second, two thousand and twenty-five. Item B, payroll ordinance number five five, five four, and item C, purchase order ordinance number five five, five five. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of it.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lysel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Evil?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Roxy. We will now turn our attention to item number eight, which is appointments and, uh, item A, volunteer fire department appointment, and I will, I recognize Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council. I come for you, uh, before you today because, uh, I was, uh, approached by a gentleman that went to Bethany College in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. His wife also graduated from Bethany College, but they were moving back to the area, so he had reached out to me and wanted to, uh, inquire about joining our fire department. Uh, his wife actually did her, uh, internship, uh, Bethany College with the police department, which is here and she, uh, was hired recently with the Slanty Police Department. And so they purchased a house in Linsburg and wanted to move to Linsburg and he, uh, wanted to, uh, get on the fire department. Uh, he's attended two, uh, meetings already, uh, with us, but his goal, um, he left Bethany and, uh, joined the Marine Corps for five years and then he's, they've lived in, uh, Crossville, Tennessee, where he's been on Crossville Fire and Rescue, uh, but he is trying to get on with, uh, Slanty Fire currently and, uh, with living here, he'd like to get on with, uh, our volunteer fire department.
Thank you, Chief, and what, and his name?
Alex Osmond. O S M U N.
Okay. Alex Osmond, okay. Uh, questions for Chief, please? Seeing no questions, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Um, Council, seeing no objections, we will appoint him to the volunteer fire department and we thank him very much. Uh, that sounds like a great background and happy to have him and thank him for volunteering. We thank you, uh, Chief, for your, uh, your work on that and, uh, it's a very important thing. I have to tell you that, uh, David gave me a, a ride on a fire truck the other day, so that's, Chief, is that scary, David and I driving around in a fire truck?
Sure, it's very good, so.
Uh, thank you. Okay, Council, Council, we are ready for item number nine, committee staff report. Uh, item A, Board of Zoning Appeals Report. Do we have a report this evening, Ken?
We do, yeah. I'll recognize Milton.
Okay, great. Milton?
Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, last Tuesday, the V Z A board did meet, uh, in discussion of a temporary, uh, temporary sign, uh, for the smorgasbord committee, uh, during the Hill test. Uh, as of right now, the city of Linsburg has a ordinance saying that they do not prohibit signs, um, the lighted L E D digital, uh, signs are all prohibited. Uh, the smorgasbord committee came to V Z A to present a case, uh, to approve a temporary digital sign up sit in the, uh, J O Centers from, uh, Conference Center in the front to advertise tickets and sales from the eighteenth, or from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. Um, I have printed out copies of, what will be on that? I set it around. Uh, it's basic information about what foods you'll be eating, uh, they're front and back just so you know. Uh, and just to improve those ticket sales, they do have seating for the Saturday night at seven thirty still available. Um, the V Z A did approve this variance, uh, for that timeframe. Uh, just want to bring that to your attention. Uh, V Z A is one of the boards that are, um, one of the, uh, boards that are able to make those variances for the city.
Really lovely photo of the Terry Soffol.
Have you got your tickets? There's still time.
You better be subsidized.
Okay, um, questions for Milton?
Okay. We don't have, take any action, so. Thank you, Milton.
You're welcome. You did a job. Feel free to keep those pictures if you like.
Sorry.
Thank you, Milton. We now turn our attention to item ten, old business. Do we have any old business this evening? Seeing no old business, we'll turn our attention to item eleven, which is new business. Item A is a mixer and I will recognize Denny Walker, our public works director, and Denny. I have to tell Councilmember Bruce thought maybe this was an entertainment time.
I thought you were planning social, yeah.
upset in the J.O. Centurion Conference Center in the front to advertise tickets and sales from the eighteenth, or from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. I have printed out copies of, what will be on that? I'm sorry. It's basic information about what foods you'll be eating. They're front and back, just so you know. And just to improve those ticket sales, they do have seating for the Saturday night at seven thirty still available. The DZA did approve this variance for that timeframe. I just want to bring that to your attention. DZA is one of the boards that are, one of the boards that are able to make those variances for the city.
Really lovely how to, that's Terry's office.
You haven't got your tickets. It's your turn.
You better be subsidized.
Okay, questions for Milton? Okay, we don't have, take any action, so. Thank you, Milton.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Feel free to keep those pictures if you like.
Thank you, Milton. We now turn our attention to item ten, old business. Do we have any old business this evening? Seeing no old business, we'll turn our attention to item eleven, which is new business. Item A is a mixer, and I will recognize Denny Walker, our public works director. And Denny, I thought Councilmember Bruce thought maybe this was an entertainment time.
I thought you were planning social, yeah.
And I thought we were going to have to pass another resolution for the Red Barn. So anyway, we are glad it's you, so.
Good evening. The biological treatment basins at the plant out there, we have a total of eight flight mixers. The way everything's set up, it is set up for these flight mixers. So we had budgeted fifteen thousand this year to, for rebuild of these mixers. But the problem with it is they're getting to the age now, we can't get all the parts for them. So we're going to have to purchase new. We had fifteen budgeted, and this is seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we have checked into replacing them, but it would take a lot. It would take some engineering and rebuilding of the rails that they're on. So I would like for us to stay with these flight mixers. They are, they're good mixers. They're just in a very rough environment. They're submersibles, and they, you know, it's just a, it's just a rough environment for them. So staff is recommending a motion to approve the purchase of a new flight mixer from JCI Industries for seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Thank you, Denny. Are there questions for Denny?
These mixers, sorry. Five at a time are in use twenty-four hours.
Yes.
And that rotates through. I just wonder how fast does failure happen on this when the bearing went out?
You know, these things can go for years without having any issues. And then, you know, if it develops a leak for some reason, that's all it takes. Another thing is, we went for quite a while without a spiral screen that was in bad shape, and it was letting a lot more debris into the basin. And when that would get in those propellers, it would cause issues too. That is really made a big difference since we put that spiral screen out there and let it breathe out. So hopefully, we'll have a longer life. The research I've done on some of the other brands of mixers, they don't last even as long as these do. The thing about these, they're made in Sweden, and it does take a while to get parts and things in and get the good things, so we have, we have a son.
Further questions of Denny?
Just one question. So we had budgeted fifteen thousand to rebuild one, and instead, but we're still...
We probably could have rebuilt two for that.
Okay, that was what I wanted to hear, was whether that was, okay.
But, you know, with tariffs and things now, I don't know what's going to happen with prices of them now.
So we had fifteen thousand budgeted to rebuild maybe a couple of them, and instead, what are you going to buy one?
One new one. We just, we purchased one new one that we got a couple months ago. That was from last year. And now the city, the next new one. So we're just, they're getting to the age now, we're going to have to start doing something, so.
Councilmember Swanson?
They also sent a quote for a thirty thousand dollar explosion proof.
Yeah, in our, in our situation, I don't really think that that's necessary.
That money that they sent that to imply that the other one could explode?
Well, I, you know, it's just in case they thought that we were with a concern with that, so. But I don't have a concern.
Yeah, sorry, I just thought that was interesting.
And I would have put it in there because it's in it, so.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Denny. Council, you have heard the recommendation, and it's for a motion to approve the purchase of a new flight mixer, PP forty-six forty, four one one, from JCI Industries for seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Is there a motion?
Subdued. Second.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our city clerk to once again call roll, please.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Fysell?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fanderwick?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. This evening, I do not believe we have a need for an executive session. And seeing no other business, Councilmember Peterson?
On the other, can I just ask a quick question from earlier in your report about the McPherson County comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Do we know where they at in that process? Have they been working on one, and they're getting ready to release it? Or is this the very first step of starting to develop a comprehensive plan?
I don't know if we know. It's not, they're not ready to release it, I don't believe. They're taking public input, but I don't know how far along they are in there.
So if you were to attend this, you could potentially impact what's
Yes.
they're going to be doing in the plan, or will they be discussing what's already in the plan? I guess that's kind of the way.
It says that it's proposed, and so copies of the proposed plan are available for review on the county website.
So it sounds like...
You would have the office.
Pretty hard, mom.
And then, I guess...
Yeah, they've, yeah, I think that would indicate they've got, they do have a document, so you know what you're talking about. But they might be clearly still able to change.
I miss a lot, and so it could be just me, but have we been told about this earlier? And has there been opportunities for Linsburg and our citizens to weigh in on this previously? Because I had not heard.
This is the first news that I've received.
But they talked about the comprehensive plan before, though. I thought we had some of the candidates spoke to us, or...
Do you have any context on, I guess, the timeline or the history of this project?
That's a comprehensive plan. I've been on more of the housing side of it. This is kind of the first time I've really looked at this, so.
I was going to say, regretfully, I, this is the first time hearing of it too, so I'll make sure to get eyes on that.
I think it's, they have, I'm certainly no expert, but I know that there has been a lot of talk about, about land usage in the county, and it has changed. And I know that several months ago, that they had stopped approving certain uses, like to build a house, and you have, you know, been pre-approved and all that. And I don't, again, I'm not an expert, but I believe, but I know that this is part of that. They're trying to come up with a comprehensive program to see where, as a county, we want, what direction we want to go. It is my belief that they are still taking input because that, they can change it. They're not, this is not a document that's ready to go and they're ready to vote on.
But it's something that the county commissioners have been working on.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further business before us this evening, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Subdued.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.